We have approved our ordinance, we have ordinance in second meeting, we have the ordinance for the one and two amendments, two amendments to adopt the redevelopment plan for the University of George Second Plant Area in the city of New Brunswick. We have ordinance in some first reading, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, ten acres and traffic, chapter twenty-two, parking zones, we have five persons, we have twenty-one, sixty-three and one point three reds. We have resolutions one to three, first resolution one, approve by the new amendment, two, approve payroll, we authorize re- company deed tax certificate, and then we four, approve resolution to regulation, happy day of the council. And key, five, approve twenty-four city council meeting schedule, six, approve our contract with the expenses for the likely solutions, seven, approve payment to Joseph's encounter for arbitration fees, eight, approve amendment or resolution zero twenty-two thirty-three with nine months, stop an embarrassment ALC, nine, approve charter of taxes, tax license number twenty-two, ten, resolution authorizing budget transfer to a non-inusable budget, eleven, approve chapter one fifteen of your insertion for the homeless intervention outreach grant, twelve, approve amendment or resolution zero two three one one with some electric, thirteen, approve amendment or resolution R one one two three forty-three with saw every threat, fourteen, approve amendment or resolution zero eight two three one seven with program download on rent on two thousand two class double P, fifteen, approve our contract with added two L two business as I might be choosing, sixteen, authorize application acceptance of grant with the endures to department of community affairs, seventeen, approve authorization to advertise for third and deliver to twenty twenty-three, or the order for explorers, eighteen, authorize tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax and including their hands, nineteen, approve resolution to establish municipal rates for municipal planning board and zoning board of assessment at thirty for twenty twenty-three, number twenty, approve we know of legal license, special moving to the law three one three ALC, twenty-one, authorize removal of agreement with county of where to set, twenty-two, we subsidize the homeless guarantee of seventeen thousand four hundred sixteen oh one and one thousand nine twenty, including any two, as verified by the CFO, to the state theater, twenty-three, approve amendment or resolution zero seven two three four seven with add nine ways of care, twenty-four, approve resolution authorizing amendment of understanding between the city of New Brunswick, Department of Independence County for specialized equipment twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, approve our amendment or resolution R one one two three oh seven, this is to approve this to New Brunswick City Market, reference to the holiday concert and three ninety and hours for street clothes, twenty-six, approve request for street clothes in cycle use and use of moving square block to get prices equals the market, twenty-seven, approve our amendment or resolution one one two three oh eight, this is where the New Brunswick City Market, twenty-eight, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure requested by support crane and reading ALC, twenty-nine, approve our amendment or resolution zero five two three forty-eight, we hold down download on dons and lots P, thirty, permission authorizing assignment of one tax sale certificate for this under the value of two million eight thirty-five one four eight twenty-four, thirty-one, approve person to person and place case transfer of legal license from somewhere else in rhythm and spice for our injury of ALC, thirty-two, approve city property requested by all probation of the homes, and thirty-three, approve request for volume close to closure and new city property requested by Dr. University of Station and Dr. University of the College, then we have items for discussion by council based to the members and council agenda review, the next on the B, Wednesday, December eight, December six, and so twenty twenty-three thirty, followed by the city council meeting. At this time, we need to come to order.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming, his accent. Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council vice, councilmember Sephora Ludwig, we, I'm sorry. Council Vice President Egan?
Here.
And Council President Escobar?
Here.
Yes, we advise that the notice requirements of the Ocean Point Infinity Act has been complied with and satisfied in that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time period of time of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate policy in the city home, and has been presided to the official newspaper to the city of New Brunswick, Navy Day Home News Tribune. Thank you for this.
At the beginning, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good will of the great and justest God.
At this time, I just want to have a mention, this past Saturday, we celebrated a veteran's day, so I ask that tonight, take a moment to reflect on the great sacrifices from the entire veterans, and let me thankful for all who have served. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Madam Chair, has the correspondence in direction to appropriate department?
Yes, Madam President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to vote ordinance, ordinance has been discussed in the second meeting, we have ordinance zero one two three oh six amended by resolution zero one two three oh six dash one, it's an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, five, business licenses and regulations, chapter five, ten oh nine, cannabis licensing and regulation. Before, do you know what Mr. Chaney would like to give a summation of these particular ordinance?
Yes, Madam President, members of council, members of the public, this particular ordinance amendment basically codifies the creation of a cannabis advisory committee made up of various specialties. The purpose of the committee is to review applications for cannabis drug use in the city of New Brunswick, the ordinance further elaborates on the practice and procedure of reviewing approval of those licenses, the ordinance also has some penalty provisions for operations that, establishments maybe I should say, that decide to operate and sell cannabis without a license, so that's in here as well.
Thank you. Do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments on this particular ordinance? We are preparing now to open the public hearing on this ordinance only, four to five minutes per person, one time off, you may come up if you wish to address the council and use specific ordinance. Any member of the public wishes to address the council and use ordinance? See none?
Who do you order next?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have ordinance number two, ordinance one one two three oh one, and ordinance two, adopt the redevelopment plan for the University of George Second Plant Area in the city of New Brunswick. Mr. Dominguez, would you like to give a summation please on this particular ordinance?
Certainly. So this is a redevelopment plan that will be an overlay for the block, for most of the block in which the abundant life church sits, the George Street, Moore Street, Cabernet Way, Nielsen Street, would allow the church, who've been seeking to redevelop the site, if they have a little over, I want to say about an acre and a quarter of a, of a site to redevelop that site into a productive use, right now it's currently dirt and gravel that they use ad hoc as a parking lot, and it would allow the church to stay there long term while also creating housing opportunities, commercial opportunities, and ten percent set aside affordable housing units for that development.
Thank you. Any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments on this particular one?
Understanding is it could go up beyond ten percent, is there other things, is that possible?
There's no limit beyond the minimum threshold of ten percent, my understanding is that the developer is seeking different sources of funds that might allow them to get to the number that they need to, to develop the project, and as such, they, a lot of those funds do have conditions attached with even higher levels of affordable housing, and so we encourage them to seek those out, and they're looking at them to help them pencil out their project, so it's certainly possible.
Thank you. At this time, we are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only, any member of the public wishes to speak to the council on this ordinance only, you have up to five minutes, one time off.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, I will speak on the same situation that I was with the planning board Monday evening, enough with these luxury apartments, New Brunswick is overpopulated already, due to where the planning board heard it directly from the attorney from Board of Education, when he said our schools are jam-packed, where we do not have enough room, where they decided to expand the high school, on the new high school on Route twenty-seven, now making forty percent of Avenue a permanent middle school, due to where enough with all of this housing, due to where, what, New Brunswick is overpopulated, what, just like I said, you see Holland Park Building, you see East Brunswick Building, you see Edison Building, but wow, are they overpopulated like New Brunswick, what, thirty people in a household, due to where can't even keep up with the traffic, the same situation people complained about, what, with the redevelopment, with you trying to put a luxury building with the Elks over there, enough, why don't you think if beauty, does the beauty make somebody better, wow, will, will beauty take, 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 what, all the harm out of all this crime going on in New Brunswick, please, are you kidding me, and last month, what I meant, what I announced, please, stop thinking about doggone luxury apartments, and wow, think about making our community safe, that we have six dead bodies last month, over four murderers, and how many council would I drag red, what happened only in the month of October, why are your minds focused only on, what, luxury, luxury, how many homeless people we have living out, out here, affordable housing would be decent, but like I said, wow, I know how you councilmembers just love to look out for your buddies on the side, bringing cash into them, but like I said, start thinking about the real solution to make New Brunswick better, and surely not by beauty, due to where with the crime, the murdering, the drugs, the homelessness, come on, enough, same thing I said at the other, other meeting, but one thing I'm trying to understand, is due to where, with you putting this through, where, is it true that abundant life has to make an agreement with the other owners that own that property, because all of that land there is not abundant life, so is that true?
Mr. Dominguez?
The redevelopment plan includes, I think, three parcels, one of which, which comprises like ninety-five percent of the site, is the churches, so there are two marginal parcels on the edges, that if the church can arrange to purchase from them, it'll add a little bit of better shape to the site, but, so they're added in, included, if they can buy it, just to make it easier for better shaping of the site, it's not anticipated that the church will end up acquiring any of those sites, it's just a massive portion that's just the church lot, which is very irregularly shaped, it's kind of very blob shaped, so yeah.
So what about park, what about parking, you already have an issue with parking there, like I said, with tra- traffic, due to where, what is the, what is the situation going to be for parking?
It's anticipated that there will be about a six or seven story parking deck, with some, with two of the stories underground, and it'll fully, it's anticipated it will fully park the requirement for the building.
So is that one, one, one car per apartment, per place, or, or, what, if you're married, or what, you have two cars, so?
Is there any other questions or comments on any, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Well, like I said, who said, you want to kill a time, go ahead, that's all you were doing, but like I said, so okay, if a couple, if you're married, you have two, two cars for one place, it's going to work out, because like I said, wow, the same situation that I'm talking about, you went to Livingston Avenue, where it was recalled back to the planning board, not enough parking, and wow, you just assigned with planning board over on my area, all saying only tenants can move in with no cars, so like I said, please, do you think I'm really going to think that's true, what, what you are saying, saying, what you're passing, so please, like I said, is, is there, is there a limit of one car, what is the restriction on this?
Mr. Dominguez?
The way that, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
The way that the cars end up getting divvied up will be between all the different uses, and how the property owner will end up choosing to manage it, it's at the discretion of, of that, and the formula is the formula in the plan, it encourages electric vehicles, the estate has an EV credit for units, high rises already don't require one-to-one parking at, by state law, so it's largely following that same standard.
Well, like I said, like, like I said, due to where enough with these luxury apartments is not cleaning the area up, making New Brunswick look better, where the mayor keeps saying crime is down, and it's not.
Thank you for this comment. Anybody else on these particular ordinance?
Yes. I have two questions about the ordinance, in terms of the redevelopment plan, what is the density allowance, Mr. Dominguez?
I'm sorry?
The density allowance?
That was a question I mean, I wanted to ask you.
Pardon me, ma'am, what is the density allowance for the site?
It's, it's unregulated, we, we don't usually use density units, like units per acre caps in the city of New Brunswick, so whatever they can fit within the floor area ratio box of the permitted development is what they can fit, the permitted FAR for that site would be twenty to one, it's anticipated it'll be seven to eight hundred units on the site.
And in terms of AMI, what is the affordability, so what is the AMI?
The, the regulation, the way we framed out the redevelopment plan, is if the developer is to secure outside funding from another source that has requirements, that they have to follow those requirements, otherwise they have to follow whatever the COA percentage standards are that are typical, and that, and that's what, how it'll be handled.
Last question, is there any mention in the redevelopment plan of supportive housing or housing for the homeless?
It, it's not specifically mentioned, but if they want to dedicate the seventy or eighty units of affordable toward homeless housing, they're free to do so.
It's up to the developer.
At that, right, at that, yes, there's no mandate.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else?
President? It's okay, I'll address you from here.
Hi, Mr. Cravill, my name is Cravill tonight.
Thank you, Charlie Cravill, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, I wanted to first clarify, this is the same exact ordinance that you voted against a month ago, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I asked a question last time, but I wasn't able to get the, the answer, if you don't approve this ordinance, what is the maximum height that a developer could, could propose for this land?
Mr. Dominguez?
I believe under the underlying zoning, it's three hundred feet, okay, and to clarify, if you do pass this ordinance, the developer would be able to build up to four hundred and fifty feet, if and only if they include ten percent affordable units, is that correct?
Mr. Dominguez?
Yes, they, that's true, but I also would like to clarify that that only applies to a maximum of twenty percent of the parcel, so they can't go a hundred percent four fifty, they go twenty percent four fifty, the rest has a ceiling of three fifty for the site.
And, and both of those are contingent upon the, the affordables, otherwise they are.
Are they? Mr. Dominguez?
If they would not do the affordables, but the redevelopment, if the redevelopment plan is adopted, they proceed without the affordables, their maximum height would be three fifty, site-wide.
But if they choose to include ten percent of the units affordable, then a portion of the structure can tower as high as this four hundred and fifty feet over those of us here on the ground.
In the truth, right? Mr. Dominguez, that's actually right.
Sorry?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, and I did, I guess want to express the same concern I expressed last time, and, and say that, you know, we're in a housing crisis, we need affordable housing, and if we're gonna be greenlighting an out-of-state developer to, to build on a piece of prime real estate, and give them permission to build as tall as anything that's ever been built in this city's history, you should require them to do more than ten percent affordable housing, indeed, you know, there's projects I could see out the window that have twenty percent affordable housing, I don't know why the city would give away, you know, the, the sort of, the tallest structure in New Brunswick, the ability to build the tallest structure in New Brunswick for just ten percent when we're in a crisis, and it's really the worst it's been in a long time, so I wanted to ask, Madam Council President, are you gonna again vote down this ordinance, or have you changed your position?
I changed my position, I voted down the last time, because I had some information, I had some questions and information, I was leaving the information that I needed, so I am comfortable and I'm confident about the project, so yes, I will be voting, okay.
Okay, and, yeah, Mr. Castaneda made a similar statement the last meeting, that he'd obtained additional information, that changed his mind, can you share with us what that information is?
My information?
Yeah, what, what changed your mind?
Just different, different things that I wanted to know, you know, in terms of the project, they hide, I was confused over, about the height of the buildings, some other minor stuff that I wanted to make sure that I was making any decisions, so minor stuff.
Okay, so, do you share my concern about affordable housing and the lack of it in New Brunswick?
There, there is, there, there is affordable housing, there's always a need, but there's also, if you look at it, in most of the things that we have done, there's affordable units in it, that area of this building is going to be up, there's going to be new affordable units specifically for, we're trying to secure the homeless, there's also, there's going to be a brand new studio building that is going to be affordable also, and there's other units in that area that are, that, man, we stay at Riverside, so there's affordable units in that area already, and the city, as, as far as I know, when there's an opportunity, we're going for them, for affordable, and we encourage, we want more, so, yes, so this is the, I take it a little big, personal, the fact that people say, you have no idea of affordable housing, yes, we have, that we have, you know, that we need more, yes, like we need more of many other things, but we have been taking the.
I mean, to be fair, as I pointed out, the city's paper report notes that zero units of affordable housing were created in the past year, I know you mentioned that there's a building on the way, but it's been on the way for five plus years now, if you're talking about the Sterling Side Project, if you're talking about the replacement of the Hoffman Pavilion, that's ten years overdue now, so the, the affordable housing projects are moving fast, and I would suggest if you agree we need more, you should table this ordinance and put more of a requirement for affordable housing in it, because, you know, once you, once you give it away, you can't take it back, so I would, I would encourage you to, to, to demand more.
Thank you, Mr. Cravill, I just want to make sure that those affordable units or affordable buildings have not been built, not outdoors, the economy, there's all the factors that have been there, it's not because we have said no, we don't want them, it's just all the factors that have impacted, I see all the times, so there's no doubt we are just taking that light, but thank you, anybody else? See none?
Who do you order?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have ordinance on first reading, we have ordinance one one two three oh two, it's an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, chapter ten, vehicles and traffic, chapter ten, twenty-two, all, and the parties, parking zones, four hundred and five persons, we are adding twenty-eight minutes, sixty-two yardage of part number one, and one point three reds. And the ordinance, putting down, we can have six, ten, twenty, four, direction, we have.
Seven. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Now we have resolutions one to thirty-three, do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions or comments on this particular resolutions? I do have some questions on number seven, Mr. Cruz, can you give a little bit about number seven? Item seven, yeah, this is the, approval payment of those.
There we go, thank you, yes. Item seven, approval payment, this is related to the FMA filed an arbitration over a firefighter being properly paid for vacation and sick balances at retirement, the arbitration hearing lasted for the better part of a day, involves subwarrantances and exhibits, the city responsible fifty percent of any arbitration costs, and this will cover that cost.
Thank you. Then on number, can you give an update, this is Mr. Chaney, on number fourteen, resolution one one two three five?
Yes, I am Council President, members of council, this is a, involves a lawsuit filed by Mr. Cravill against the city of New Brunswick, the police director, who, relative to his desire to disclose his home address, as being aware, as you're aware, applies this matter just filed in Superior Court, the trial court matter was decided in favor of the city, it's now in the appellate division, Mr. Cravill has appealed, and this particular additional fifteen thousand dollars is going to go to additional liberties in that regard.
Thank you, and then on resolution one one two three fifty-five, that's number twenty-four, we cannot remember, this is in reference to the number of articles under standing between the city of New Brunswick Police Department and New Brunswick County for specialized equipment, and you just told us about what is, tied into this specialized equipment.
Sure, Council President, this pertains to county emergency management, and they have certain equipment such as communications command posts in case of a, in a matter of a large-scale incident, they have drones in the case of a missing person, tracking bloodhounds in the case of a missing, recently with a, a missing autistic child, these require an MOU to, to request those services from county emergency management.
Thank you. Any, you know, councilmembers, any councilmembers have any questions or comments on their resolutions? Number one?
No.
At this time, we are preparing to open, maybe to call the comment, comments, again, when you put it again, comments on the resolutions only, you have up to five minutes per person, one time off, any member of the public wishes to address the council and make any comments on the resolutions, please approach the council.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, I would ask with, with number eleven, due to where I see homeless individuals have this grant, seventy thousand dollars, can you tell me information on that, please?
This is a grant that we just acquired, that was given to the city by St. Peter's University Hospital, and with that grant, we are, I'm excited about this, we are going to be doing outreach to our homeless population, we're going to have three part-time, that we already have, and do this part-time training on how to do outreach, and to help connect our homeless individuals to services and other resources, because there's going to be also this, we're going to have a full-time program manager who will be working also in the program, so I'm excited, this is you, I believe to the best of my abilities, Mr. Jones, or Mr. Cruz.
Well, okay, now that you just said, as I can understand this correctly, due to where I know what the situation, meaning we're helping needing people, due to why, I helped many others, where they would like to turn themselves into a program, where you, why I heard you say full-time, of the situation that I was going against before, due to where, for example, someone say they want to turn themselves into a program, due to where Captain Bobadilla was the only one available, what, if he's not working at the time, so please tell me, are you saying we will have someone twenty-four hours to, to wear, on, on stand with this?
What I'm saying is that we're going to have three part-time employees, who are ready, of the team, who are going to be trained in how to do outreach to the homeless individuals, and with this also, we're going to have a full-time person employee, police employee, what will be overseeing and managing.
Well, okay, what do you, what do you, when you say full-time, due to where, meaning what, what, how, how many hours, due to where?
Full-time works, forty hours a week, normally.
Well, like, I, I, I like your program, but due to where I spoke on better, due to where, wow, like I told you, like this situation with the drugs going around New Brunswick, with many overdoses that we had. with many overdoses that we had, due to where we need more people, due to where, wow, like I said, it takes a person courage, due to where plenty of them say, "Okay, I'm ready to go, I'm ready to need help." But nobody during, if that's during night, no one's available, due to where, wow, how they just go on and change their mind. I mentioned this to you before, due to where I work with a lot of the homeless and the ones due to where needing the program, how I, I help them get better. But like I said, I'm glad to see this, but like I said, my point is, I hope we can have somebody who's on standby, 'cause it takes a person a lot of courage to say, "Ooh, I'm ready to get help." Thank you.
You're absolutely right, thank you, Ms. Daniel, we take that into consideration. Anybody else, which is why I just said, council, the resolutions only, Mr. Cravill?
Yes, please, Charlie Cravill of New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Can I first get some details on the agreement with Franklin for water supply? What's the rate that they'll pay for our water?
Mr. Waters, do you people say, I don't wanna make a mistake, I hear the
Council President?
Oh, I
The agreement with Franklin is identical to the agreement with Milltown, our other bulk water purchaser. And it has a nine percent increase for this year, and three point five percent increases for the next years through twenty twenty seven.
And then what after that, I noticed there is a twenty-five year agreement?
We renegotiated after that, it gives us the opportunity to assess our costs, come up with a new cost schedule, and then proceed from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chan, you can add up all the things you have to do there.
It was already addressed partly, the arbitration for the case involving Joseph McCada, I don't know if I'm saying that right. Can you provide a little more about the nature of the case, what was involving whether or not he had been paid enough or overpaid for vacation time? Is that what I heard?
Mr. Cruz, would you like to address that? I think that you gave sufficient information, but would you like to address that?
I'll simply add, it had to do with calculation of benefit time and historic calculation of management's office.
Thank you.
Okay, was it resolved in favor of the city, or in favor of the gentleman, or somewhere in between?
Somewhere in between is a good answer.
Okay, thanks for that. Move on to the AccraSure contract, number fifteen. Can you tell me how this firm was selected, do they already work for the city, and what is the cost of this deal?
Lieutenant Oliver? Council President, the, this is a current company that we've been using for the past year. Another R F P was about this year, we have two respondents, and we decided that we were very happy to look for services from previous year.
Thank you.
And the fee is six percent of the total, of the premium paid by the joint insurance fund.
Thank you.
Interesting, and the other applicant, did they give a percentage that they would want?
It's a standard rate, six percent.
Both were six percent, okay. Thank you, I'll move on to, well, let's ask about the billing rates for the planning and zoning board attorneys. What prompted this, and what's, what's it gonna be going forward?
Then you have the numbers, oh
Number nineteen, and it's in three five zero?
Nineteen, okay, yes, this is the biggest.
Yes, so the city hadn't previously put in for, with professionals, for board professionals, the city is allowed to reimburse against the escrow of applicants that have land use applications, we do so for planners, engineers, et cetera. We're allowed to for attorneys as well, it's not something we've done in the past, but it's something we realized that would be a prudent action going forward. And so we've taken this step to do so, so we can offset the costs incurred with Mr. Solomon's salary, who's our board attorney, through the escrows that the developers pay for. The rate is factoring in that it's, the municipal land use law lets us charge two hundred percent of what the, his base rate would be. Comes to three hundred and eleven dollars an hour.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask about the liquor license right after that, Lucky One Oh Three L L C, do I, I know the place where this might be? What establishment is it?
Council President, currently they do not have a location, it's in the pocket.
Okay, and the special ruling that's referenced, is that recent?
It's been enacted, it was from
Long time ago, okay. I think the only other one I wanted to ask about is, it's in three sixty-one, this is a tax sale certificate. Says for less than the redemptive value, two point eight million dollars and change. This is, I believe, the chemical plant, chemical factory that was at Jersey and Van Dyke, if I'm not mistaken. Can anybody tell me what has led to this enormous amount of money, and what that means for the city, to sell the tax certificate?
Mr. Chan?
Yes, I'm Council President, this is a resolution which authorizes us to put up this particular tax sale certificate, which has been on the city's books for decades. It involves a piece of property on Triangle Road that has a lot of contamination, and has not had any interest in redevelopment for decades. The city has got wind of a potential purchaser of the property. In order for that particular purchase to occur, obviously, there's a redemption of that tax sale certificate. It's an opportunity for the city to get paid back. In order for the council to consider accepting whatever the bid value is, this resolution authorizes that. This will be back before you probably last year in December, with the results of the auction, whatever they may be.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I just wanna ask, is this gonna be combined with all the other tax sales this year, or is it a special?
Special tax.
A special sale, okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on the resolutions? Senator?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, I'm gonna give an update, and then after my update, I'm gonna ask one of my colleagues to, the council is gonna go on those sessions, but for now, I just wanna give the updates prior to that. Just some updates and some acknowledgement notifications, just know that particularly advised, due to human error, this past Saturday, they called through the instant notification was late, nonetheless, we put out the alert at seven forty-three. Also, on November eighth, there was a press release issued regarding the arrest of the New Brunswick Police Works employee. The employee questioned, as stated in the press release, has been charged with two counts of criminal trespass and two counts of theft. At this time, the council will not make any additional comments on the arrest and on the investigation. At the last council meeting, there was a question regarding how many police officers are bilingual, and what languages are spoken. Currently, the New Brunswick Police Department employs forty bilingual officers, of which two of them speak more than one, two languages. Spoken languages include Spanish, Bengali, Cantonese, Creole, Hebrew, and Tagalog. There were some questions in, in some, as, you know, questions about, you know, the council supporting a resolution, doing a resolution in support of P O S three oh four. The council has not made a decision yet, and we don't know if we're gonna make one. And we are, I am allowing more time for council members to receive more information. The city, recently, we talked about it, the grand from San Peters, who's gonna be helping out for us to create a municipal homeless outreach team, which I'm excited, and I'm looking forward to the work, and I believe that the training started already with the outreach team members. I just wanna acknowledge that this past Tuesday, I believe that it happened, at the Department of Human and Community Services, helped a resource, a resource payer for the community, in effort to provide residents with information and resources about the different departments and services that are under that specific department, so I thank you for that, that was great. At this time, I would like to take a motion from one of my colleagues to go into those sessions.
Motion. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Now, as Council President, for the, for the minutes, the closed session, we guard, with reference to personal matters?
Personal matters, I think it is, yeah.
We guard the council, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson? [S01] Yes. Councilmember Castaneda? [S02] Yes. Councilmember Gaskin? [S03] Yes. Councilmember Secor Ludwig? [S04] Yes. Council Vice President Egan? [S05] Yes. Council President Escobar? [S06] Yes.
For purposes of the members and council members, the closed session, the executive session of the council involved personnel issues regarding one of which is Mr.[S06] Egan's recent election to the General Assembly and the ultimate vacating of that particular seat also involved discussions regarding personnel benefits in the new East of the council as they currently exist.
Thank you. At this time, we are preparing to open the meeting for calling comments. Comments, up to five minutes per person, one time off. Any member of the committee who has discovered comments or cannot read please approach the council. Anybody?
I can't hear you.
You can get that to council member. I can't connect, excuse me.
Castaneda? Yes.
Before we do that, I'm going to tell Do-Do Far to somebody.
Give it to us, give it to her.
I didn't say you, I just said Do-Do Far.
I said give it to the city clerk.
Okay, yes.
Whatever you need to distribute. Thank you. And who is this one?
This is for council member Gaskin.
Yes, Daniel Moore, your time is, you know, one minute to waste your time, so go ahead.
Well, I hope my time starts now and I'm talking.
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Daniel Moore, I'm going to continue. First, I would like to say, I would like to thank you for the garbage workers responding immediately to what I called the handy street due to a big supply of needles and drug items on the ground. Wow, since you put that sanitary drug-free spool on, wow, people thinking, who, you're giving out drugs free over there? Due to where, wow, more problems over there. God bless, I thank you how they responded immediately when I called. Now, I'm going to continue on what I was saying due to where, this will be the last thing with council member Gaskin calling me a racist due to where, like I said, talking about if someone's not a U.S. citizen. Due to, I just gave her the paperwork due to where, what, like I said, I've been sexually assaulted. Wow, thank you, like I said, the Lord's been blessing me where I also showed you, you can think of me whatever you want. Please ask the man sitting next to you, Mr.[S10] Egan, ask Mr.[S10] Endon, what happens to people due to where, wow, I'm not that, I'm not what you said it said. Ask him what's happened when you get a chance. Due to where, because the Lord has proved to me, I'm not the devil, you are. Wow, to send me your blessing was to see my last little $9.83 PSC and D bill, you can't tell I've been having been blessed with what I'm showing you. But for you to keep calling me a racist, due to where, wow, yes, my concern is due to where I feel whether you're a U.S. citizen or not. And I just showed you, this began back in 2017. Due to where the man, what, this is all with Mayor Cahill, New Brunswick Police Department, youth city council members, Middlesex County prosecutor, and New Brunswick Brunswick Court, where while the man was in jail, what, ICE Immigration Act will hold him, you, they released him, and he murdered people in three days, murdered three people in two days. So this is nothing new is going on, where you need to learn information, but what's going on through here, where you're a beginner, because I'm not, I've been here forty-six years, but I'm not gonna have someone tell me, ooh, I can't put no hand, my hands on no one, due to where, what, let a man come up and grab me, does please do anything, what, four women were beaten, and three other women, sexually assaulted, spit on, what did New Brunswick Police say, Sergeant Bobo, oh, marijuana's legal, let him walk away, let him walk away, I just seen an article two weeks ago, right after meeting, wow, four women were sexually assaulted, due to where, one was a rubber student, due to where, wow, what, did they demand get arrested? Yes, he did. Like I said, due to where you don't wanna take responsibility in following the law, due to where, what, if someone's a U.S. citizen or not, but I'm seriously, I'm getting tired of it, now I have, I got my last piece to my puzzle, to prove my evidence, I will be going to the news channel again, and following against New Brunswick, due to where, with real racism that you should be speaking up to, not me, while the young lady that was killed last year by what, on River Asteden and Rebel Avenue, due to where, by a man drinking and driving, no license, due to where, hit and run, he leave, what, they arrest him, find out, what, he's not a U.S. citizen, let him go? Do you think, what, as, how, like I said, with the man that I'm in court with, how in the world was he even released, over three pages long, assaulted six people, and like I said, just be let go? And now he's being held for immigration, like I said, the reason why New Brunswick Police Department does not do anything on Frank Street, because like I said, and for you to lie and say that we don't have no U.S. citizens, non-U.S. citizens here, illegals here, you say we don't, wow, fifty percent of New Brunswick, what, the whole jailhouse would be filled with New Brunswick residents, and that's why you guys keep letting them do that, what, you just had two stabbing over there the other day, on Frank Street by the bar. Does anything ever happen to them, get tickets over there, arrest, no they don't, but like I said, wow, you can do anything, and then you wonder why I say, ooh, what is the law in New Brunswick, ooh, you can do whatever you want, long as you're not black, because wow, that's the main one that I keep seeing, which, do I have the evidence? Yes, I do, even with the judges, like I told you last time, what, two Latinos hit and run, two hundred dollar fine, judge, black man, loud music, eight hundred dollar fine, but wow, all you participate, do you try to make it equal? Please, I help anybody, no matter what race, creed, or color, we need each other, everyone's gonna need a helping hand some that day, due to where, what, I help anyone, but like I said, they didn't want to let you learn your lesson, I'm not a racist, and you maybe you wanna speak to your tenants.
Thank you, Samuel. Anybody else want to call, we should address the council.
Hi, my name is Jessica Kino, I'm actually a resident of New Brunswick, I'm one of the seventeen hundred erces that have been on strike for over a hundred days now, I believe we're on a hundred and five. I know that you guys touch base, that you guys need more time to review the information regarding resolution supporting the bill of S three zero four, I just want you to understand that, obviously, we do have a sense of urgency, state staffing is not just limited to Robertwood Johnson, but it is literally a concern for the entire state as well as the nation. We would like to know what further information we can provide you, obviously, we are the experts, we do the work at the bedside, what we want most is to be able to come back to serve our patients. You guys have the responsibility of, obviously, the presidency of New Brunswick, and our labor dispute is happening here in New Brunswick, we don't need you to fix our labor dispute, but please, we urge you to speak to your representatives, senators, senators, to please support this bill, so please, we ask that you just give us whatever information you need in addition, so we can pass a resolution in reference to our bill of S three zero four. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Tansy, I'm a nurse at Robertwood as well, and I'm glad that Mr. Egan is here today, because we haven't been able to actually talk to you about this, but I was very encouraged at the labor walk, the day that we participated in the labor walk, and to hear that, that unions are alive and well in New Brunswick, and that they do wanna support each other, we're asking for that same support, because this is a workplace issue that does as well affect communities, so it's twofold, and your support would be invaluable in this situation, because you do have a voice on the inside, the legislation part of it. We, I was a little disappointed to hear that you guys weren't ready to talk about that yet, but what I'll offer is, we have all the information you need, if I could speak to somebody about arranging a meeting to answer questions, or any things that aren't clear, I'm happy to do that, so I don't know who I would speak to about that, just so that everyone is on the same page about what we're actually asking for, and what is actually required for this.
Thank you.
So who would I speak to about?
You know, then we move the information to the city clerk.
Okay, afterwards, okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to move closer?
Josh, you from Madison, just to state quickly, some of these other towns that have supported, or supporting, or passed, or supporting a resolution, asking, calling on the state senators, and the state senate, and the state assembly to co-sponsor the bill, S three zero four, and A four five three six, this is for state staffing, as we all know, and it's always important to reiterate, versus some strike, is for state staffing, there are certain ratios that are guidelines that are not met, that are not kept, and that really, that affects the public health and public safety, so that's why this bill is so important, that's why Joseph Vitali is the primary sponsor of the bill, and that's why he knows this is so important, and that's why it's been the health committee, and we really to take that into consideration. So other towns, they passed it, including Madison, one thing about Madison is, you know, I think that what really helped was, someone really involved in labor spoke up at the council meetings, and said, yes, the council can definitely certainly take a position on legislation, particularly legislation that affects the public, affects the community members of that town, and so we know that these laws affect the community quite greatly and very importantly. So, and we also had a really good reception in Servile, the mayor was very supportive, and she gave a really heartfelt story about the, her experience at Robertwood Johnson, her child was really badly, and had to bring her to the hospital, because it was a dog bite, and the child was only a year and a half, so she brought her to the hospital, and she remembered the name of the nurse that helped her that day, and it was amazing, because I didn't know this was gonna happen, the nurse was actually in the crowd, and they, they talked about, a little bit about what happened, but, you know, there was a lot of, people, you know, kind of understood the importance of nursing, of, you know, having enough staff to care for patients, so they were very supportive of that, and also Franklin, this past week, they were very supportive of us as well, so we're looking forward to passing a resolution on Franklin as well, which is the same legislative process that you brought up. That's all I wanna say, and let folks know, give some context about what's going on here, and looking for support from the council and the public.
Thank you. Anybody else want to move ahead, Derek?
No, please.
Okay.
Charlie Crandall, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, I wanted to ask, why wasn't the closed session on your agenda?
Doesn't have to be on the agenda, of course, you need for, at a particular time, council can ask for, or must be related, what it involves, the purpose of it, and it's gonna be with the, with the clerk, obviously, closed session is, whatever you say, doesn't have to be on the agenda.
Just seems like it's prudent to put the agenda together before the meeting, and not change it in the middle of the meeting, if this was not something urgent, I don't know why it wasn't on the agenda, that was distributed to everyone, I also thought it was a little rude for the council to leave the public here, people who took time out of their day to come and use their five minutes to speak to you, and say, hey, we're gonna go, we're gonna go somewhere else and talk to ourselves, and, you know, for an indeterminate period of time, you've gotta wait for us, I think what most councils do is they hold the executive session for the end of the meeting, so that they can, you know, serve the public, and then do whatever needs to be done in closed session, I also would like to know, is it true that the only personnel discussed in closed session was city council?
That's true.
So, I don't see why that needed to be done in secret, then, why would the city council not have discussion about their pay, their benefits, their annuities in public? You think this needs to be secret?
Research, having that lawyer.
It's not that it needs to be secret, it involves attorney-client communications as well, and that is a purpose for closed session involving procedures and policies, so it involved all of those things, as far as the procedure goes on filling a council seat, we could talk about that in public, and we could tell you about it.
Probably should have been done in public.
Oh, yes, I'll tell you about it, Mr. Crandall, I mean, you know, that's.
I'm familiar with it, I just don't wanna see things that are supposed to be done in public, taken behind closed doors, and I don't, I still haven't heard a good reason why that discussion had to be brought behind closed doors, can you tell me, are there any changes being made to the benefits or annuities for the city council, or are you contemplating making changes?
With respect to those communications, you'll have to wait and see what the council does, I think that anything that affects that has to be done in public by ordinance anyway, so that's the public, adoption of first and second meeting, you can see those things, so obviously, we're not doing anything in private when it comes to matters of that nature.
Okay, well, for the record, I do think it was wrong to discuss it in private, if you're gonna change your pay, or change your benefits, we all have a right to know about it, and I don't think that the privacy protections that might apply to a DPW worker should apply to the elected officials of the city, but I'll move on, I wanted to ask about J.T. Miller, now that he is back on the city payroll, being paid eighty thousand dollars to be a public information officer, can anyone tell me who he reports to, and is it a full-time position?
Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mr. Miller reports, he's the opposite mayor, public information, full-time position.
So now we have two full-time public information officers, is that correct?
We have one full-time public information officer.
One.
And is Mr. Barron no longer full-time?
Mr. Barron is part-time.
Okay, so we have two public information officers, and, yeah, I just think this is very intriguing, because as you know, Mr. Miller was paying over two hundred thousand dollars a year to be in the administration of Director Caputo at the police department, and he retired just a few months ago, so it's my understanding he's collecting a six-figure pension, and despite, you know, telling the press that he was going to focus on private sector work, he's now back in the city government, getting an eighty thousand dollar job, and dare I say, he's not doing very good at it, because I saw him at the event at the water utility, and he was rude to me, without any provocation, he was, you know, refused to say what his position was, and said that he doesn't talk to me, he never will, that's a bad public information officer, if a member of the public asks you a question, you don't really engage, or, you know, you put them down, or you're rude to them, so I think he's got a lot to learn if he wants to succeed in that position, yeah, I don't think it makes a lot of sense why he was rehired, Madam President, were you consulted about rehiring him, do you think he's a good, good person to bring back after all that we've been through with him?
That's not my opinion, that's, that's how they phrase it, they decide that he's somebody who's competent, he does want his job, and they feel that he's the perfect fit, why not? So I'm confident that he will continue to do his job.
Okay.
Mr. Julius?
Council President, I'm sorry to hear Mr. Crandall's feelings were hurt, but I wanted to speak clear, I'm not trying to discharacterize him, but Mr. Miller had an appropriate retirement, qualified retirement, is rehiring, dissolved the standards, and once again, when the city can find a talented person who can help the citizens and the public, we're glad to expand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crandall, your time is up, thank you. Anybody else want to call, we should address the council?
City of the council, the Indian New Brunswick, my name is Daniel Algeverini, born here at Robertwood Johnson Hospital in New Brunswick, Connecticut, four, grew up in protection in Edison, graduated protection high school, graduated, most of the county college, I actually lived in New Brunswick through 2006, 2011, during and after Reckers, and then I moved to California to pursue affordable rural land and my master's degree, settled in the B County, California area, Chico, was able to get some land, lived very simply, for almost eight months of the year, I was living in tents, just out in the open, is the tradition of many Native Americans, and it was glorious, there's a Mediterranean climate there, long story short, however, unfortunately, I became a fire refugee about five years ago in the Paradise Concow Fire, I returned to New Jersey, I was living with family, long story short, I'm a New Brunswick resident now again, I live up on Nickel Avenue, years ago, I lived on Nicholson, down in the, at the end of near Bishop, anyhow, I wanted to draw attention to the fact that it is Native American Heritage Month, it's November, as we're all reminded, often walking near downtown New Brunswick, certainly walking into Town Hall here, there is a, like an sign, that I believe it's been up now for maybe ten years, or some such, that starts with the line, the original inhabitants of New Brunswick were the Lenni-Lenape people, and then it immediately goes into talk about the building of the city hall, and the architecture, etc., and this is a magnificent building, it serves the public well, and it's beautiful in its own right, but it's always rubbed me against the grain, to say, well, we're mentioning the Lenni-Lenape, but then we're immediately going on to the glories of this modern building, and this modern government, etc., history is what it is, but I wanted to draw your attention to something you may not know that exists, that is called the New Jersey Commission on American Indian Affairs, it's a state commission through the Department of State, the Secretary of State of New Jersey is the ex-officio chairman of the board, but the commission is made up of six members, there's eight seats, but there's currently six members, two governor-appointed seats of two members of each of the three state-recognized Lenni-Lenape tribes, so there's currently six members, there's a chairman, a co-chairman, of the Rannapalaplaneti, and the Nanikopalaplaneti, I myself am a federally-rolled-blood descendant, member of the Citizen Potawatomi tribe, Potawatomi, we come from the Great Lakes region, but originally we were from the Delaware people, the Lenni-Lenape, they're not as our grandfather, it was a prophecy seven, eight years ago, that said if we didn't migrate west, we would be destroyed, Lenni-Lenape were, some are still here, and there is not federally recognized, but they're fighting for federal recognition, they're state-recognized. Anyhow, the purpose of the commission is manifold, but it's to organize state-recognized Native Americans in New Jersey, as well as what are known as intertribal persons and intertribal people, are defined by statute as any member of a federally-recognized Native American tribe residing in New Jersey, not necessarily born, but residing, so the work of the commission is to unite Native Americans, it's also to protect our culture, to advance our culture, there's many ways we do that, working with townships, etc., to wrap up, I'm hoping that in time, and this is just to start a conversation, but I'm hoping that in time, we can see another plaque out front, perhaps many plaques, perhaps more than a plaque, Boyd Park is a beautiful resource right on the river, where many, many Lenape used to live in council, not in high-rises, but in tents and under the open air, I think it's important that, yes, New Brunswick is a changing town, but I think it's important that our youth know that it's at least possible to live very simply, close to nature, and that was once done magnificently here in the city, and I think Boyd Park would be a magnificent place to have a monument, or maybe even a museum of sorts, or an exhibit to that lifestyle, and to the culture, to the Lenni-Lenape people, and again, this is just to open a conversation, there have been efforts recently, and again, the commission will ultimately be a resource available to us as far as the historical knowledge, the crafting of any information that we can produce, but I'd very much like to be involved, I attend the meetings, I'm not an official member on the commission, but I'm, you're I'm not an official member on the commission, but I'm an intertribal person, so I attend. It's open to the full public. There's some meetings every two months, but I just think that would be great. Right now, the commission is working on advancing curriculum statewide with the Department of Education. So there's many ways that we're getting the message out, but it's up to the individuals to go to our cities and our towns and ask for some things like this. And so again, just to start the conversation, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
My part will be over. I just want to close with a saying. I'm slowly learning the language at 39 years old, but the saying, "Mano adaki, vizevnen do, nagakabonowin", means victory belongs to the great spirit, the spirit of the soul, the power of the soul and one love. And "Migwich" means thank you, so thank you very much.
Hi there, I'm from Lincoln, New Brunswick. So I do want to bring the conversation back to the issue of the nurses' strike and the safe staffing legislation. Just to lay out the timeline as far as the council's interaction with this issue. I believe it was October 4th was the first meeting where the nurses came out. At that initial meeting, council members Castaneda, Fleming, and Gaskins voiced their general support for the nurses and the issues that they're fighting for. The following council meeting on October 18th, President Escobar also indicated that she had done her follow-up research on the safe staffing legislation and was supportive of it and promised to discuss with colleagues about pursuing a resolution in support of the state-staffed legislation, as the council has done for other pieces of state legislation. Last meeting, the first of this month, there was no further update on that. And then again, this meeting, no further update on that. So it's about a month and a half now has passed since this issue was first brought into these chambers. And I'm a little perplexed why, given the importance and the urgency of the issue of safe staffing in our hospitals, why this is not a priority to address. And we see that many of the nurses, you know, spoke and spoke and many of whom are not registered but are here because they care and it's important. You know, I'm sure everyone is wondering why the council has not taken action on this yet. So I do want to ask, you know, what is the reason? What are the ongoing concerns or the questions that council members feel have yet to be answered on pursuing a resolution in support of this legislation?
What I would say about that, which I've mentioned before, personally, individually, that's something different that we, I guess, I have to admit, supporting. And I say personally, I support whatever I do as a person is different from the council. The council is a little bit different. I cannot speak for everybody. This has to be, so people need more information. So we are working, I say, we know that, that we expect. But I cannot tell you that if it's gonna be a yes at the end, I cannot tell you it's a no, right? But what I can tell you is that I know that members, you know, some members I support personally have done something about it. So it has taken longer, yes, it has taken a little bit longer, but it took us longer for this to. So we'll keep at it, we'll see what happens. But we recognize the importance of the nurses, we recognize the work that they do. And the important value.
Word second to me. Okay, well, I do want to note that the next council meeting is, as I said, that's three weeks away. So three whole weeks and you have, you know, issue area experts that can answer or answer any questions or almost any questions we could possibly ask, who have, in front of all of us, offered to meet with you all, I'm sure individually or as a group, if you like. Can you make a commitment to members of the public that one way or another, you will make a decision on this issue in three weeks at the next council?
I'm not gonna make that commitment. When I make a commitment, I'm gonna continue to, but I'm not gonna make that commitment. I will bring, I know that we will receive this information and have any other questions. So if I have any questions, I will reach out to her to ask those questions and commitments.
Well, I'm sure that three weeks is more than enough time to get a meeting with these folks. So it's really, you know, incumbent upon each of you to make the time for this issue.
I will take it.
Yes. A couple other issues that I also want to raise. I'm wondering if there's an update on when the public will need to be proposed for the future of George Street, what the plan is for that area.
I think that was disclosed at the last meeting, you asked that question. So I already did this, you, because I saw the video and so I asked that question. And there's still, that's City Market. So as soon as City Market has an answer, I'm pretty sure we'll see it and we'll have a presentation here.
So there's no timeline for when?
That's the City Market, that's the City Market issue, so.
And then the point was made several times earlier about the horrible, hyperactive crisis that we're in right now and, you know, the ongoing frustration that while there is housing that is being built in New Brunswick, it is consistently housing that is going to be at a higher price range than most of the residents who live here could ever possibly afford. It's also noted that, you know, New Brunswick, as a city, did have a plan or goal set out last year that they wanted to HUD, to build thirty-four more units and zero of those. Zero of those have come online. Given that the latest census data makes that over a third of our residents are living below the poverty line, I feel like this isn't an issue that can just be glossed over of, yes, everyone agrees it's a problem, but we're not gonna address it on this matter. If that's the conversation that we're having every time on every new housing project that comes up, we're never gonna get anywhere. So I really would like for the council to take that matter more seriously and be more proactive and approach it.
Thank you.
Well, we had your turn.
Can you add some specific questions from the council regarding the state-staffed legislation? And I figured I'd often give some of my comments later on. You may have heard that beyond four patients, every dislocation increases the risk of death by all of us by 70%. Now additionally, it also needs to define quality. When we have to move beyond 100%, it needs to come from someone. Comes from our dignity when we skip lunch, when we skip breaks, when we skip bathroom breaks, when we pick up extra to be away from our home, but to be with people that we know really need our help. It comes from patient dignity when they're lying, being ill, or have to wait for their medication. And then finally, it comes from safety and quality. You have all probably experienced or heard a story of somebody that had to wait a long time for anything in the hospital. But I would just like to leave you with this thought that these people don't get to complain. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Mendergast and I would like to follow up on a comment that you said about the regarding item number 11. You said that there's average payments being hired or hasn't been hired at all?
There is, we already, we have three, four, five employees on staff that have been really part of this outreach team. And they probably have been trained, they've been trained by coming home, they're just scanning on how to, so we can start this new initiative. And there's one person who's been hired to manage the program.
I would just like to ask about what the requirement is for it to be hired? I was recently reading research that was published by the Eagle Institute and New Brunswick Tomorrow, and the vast majority of people who are homeless or in poverty are Spanish speakers. So is what their requirement to be a native Spanish speaker in order to be hired? I think that would be very important.
I don't have the answer with that. I think that it's a good part of giving you the information that we call that very key requirement and get them hired. I don't know if we could say that it's only for, I don't think it's legal for us just to say for Spanish-speaking people. So I'm pretty sure that therefore, knowing our community has been that by being more of a plus Spanish speaking, because I acknowledge me, that's what we, I always ask for. So, but I'm pretty sure there was an effort for me to find out, for you to give the information when you did call and ask that question.
Excellent, thank you very much. And I would just like to add another thing in support of the nurses' union and their strike that's happening right now. I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned is it's also a matter of dollars and cents. Patients' lives are being impacted. But also, I have personal experience and have known friends and family members who have decided not to go to Robert Wood Johnson, not to spend their money on healthcare in New Brunswick in order to go to other places because nurses are stressed out, they're overworked, and they don't, patients don't feel as though they're getting the quality healthcare that they deserve. So I would like to encourage you to make this decision, but also keeping in mind that it's not just a decision for patients' lives, but also for the bottom line as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
People trying to come on, excuse me, Danielle. We just, I'm gonna give you a quick point.
Just want to say, just want to say, just want to say, in support of the citizens, I want to know that, you know, there are people on the line that really need that the nurses to come back. And if we can't, we are suffering tremendously. I know before, they just were, you know, fighting the same horrors today. Maybe they have to, it's been a disease since COVID. And even like blocking them, making sure they're all right, but they're still still on the line. Ninety-four days, no one has enough in the mouth. I just want to know what's going on. This is exhausting.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmembers of the Cora Ludway?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?